All right, Happy New Year's Day everyone and welcome to our first meeting of 2020. We're gonna have our invocation by Chaplain Ron Little with the Clayton County Fire Department be followed by the invocation that will be led this evening by retired Sergeant James Tooth. I mean, the pledge, what did I say? Oh, okay. The pledge by Sergeant James Tooth, who is a 100-year-old World War II veteran. All right? Please stand. Chaplain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lord, as we come before you, we thank you for another day and another year. We thank you for the work of the county, the work of these men and women, as you have placed them in these positions of authority. We ask that you would give them discretion, that you would give them purpose, and as they are an extension of you, you would give them the judicial power that they need to accomplish what needs to be taken care of in this county. Thank you for loving us, Forts, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
He don't have to stand if he can.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, as the chairman has said, Happy New Year to each of you. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners' January 1st, 2020 Regular Business Meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any board members have any amendments?
I don't have an amendment, but I do have a question. Have we approved the calendar for 2020?
Yes, I was approved earlier, a long time ago.
Your next approval comes up in June 4th. We actually approve it based upon the fiscal year.
Okay, did we take care of the 4th of July?
That's next year, it'll be on next year's calendar. July, July, July 1st is beginning of our new fiscal year.
Okay, so we'll do it.
So, we'll do it, we'll set the calendar this next time out. All right, any other comment statements or modifications? Hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay, our first presentation today is for the Veteran of the Month.
All right, as I said earlier, our Veteran of the Month is Sergeant James Tooth, who is a 100-year-old World War II veteran. In 1940, the draft was instituted, and Mr. Tooth volunteered to help sign up the draftees. However, little did he know that after volunteering to sign draftees up for the Army, he would later be sent a letter telling him to report to Fort Snelling in Detroit, Michigan for boot camp. He was in boot camp for 13 weeks when he learned, where he learned how to use a bayonet. From 1941 to 1946, he served as a door gunner and radio operator. Sergeant Tooth served in about 66 combat missions on a B-26 bomber in the 9th Air Force during the armed, the Allied invasion of Normandy in Germany. He had the top number of combat, combat missions on his base and was the longest-serving soldier there as well. He was featured on the front page of the Stars and Stripes magazine. He served in Army Corps before it was changed to the Army Air Force. He had the job of going throughout the airplane and taking the pins out of the bombs, I don't know if I want that job, before they were dropped. He flew missions to several countries, but mostly to Germany. Mr. Tooth said his most influential memory was when there was a direct hit on a plane near his. He commented that the plane just disintegrated, excuse me, nobody got out. Everything went to the ground. More than half the people in his unit were killed. He had two extremely close encounters with death. When asked if he was ever scared, he responded, "No, I didn't have time." This incredible man lived through the Great Depression, served in 66 combat missions, worked the same job for decades, was married to his wife for 65 years until her death, helped both of his children through college, and paid off his house in three years. Tell me how you did that. The main word that can describe Sergeant Tooth is dedicated. His grandson said he is one of his role models because he persevered through everything that life threw at him and succeeded in whatever he set his mind to. Please let me, help me to give this incredible man a round of applause.
Mister Chairman, while we're waiting for our Veteran of the Month to exit, could someone give me a motion in a second to adopt the agenda?
I thought we did that.
No, sir, you just asked all in favor, so I do need a motion for the record.
Okay, excuse me, I got excited about the veteran.
About the Veteran of the Month.
All right. Who made the motion?
You did, I think, you made it.
I did, I said it.
Okay, I made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hambrick, second motion, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Also, I'm just gonna blurt it out, today is Commissioner Gregory's birthday.
(Applause).
It's so good to be 30.
Happy Birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mister Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to say Happy New Year, Madam Clerk. Before you start my clock, I have some presents for the Commissioners and Chairman.
Some presents?
As a follow-along in my presentation this evening. This is the year 2020, and 2020 means perfect vision. So, as we move forward in our agenda, those are pictures of some of my concerns that I've documented, spent a lot of time and energy on. If you're gonna follow me, they're in pneumatic order, I'm gonna start off with number one.
Thank you.
Number one is a MARTA bus stop located at Hasten Bridge and East Lovejoy Road. We still have a trash bag tied to it. Number two picture depicts another trash bag tied to a MARTA bus stop, and it has a trash bag tied to it throughout the city of Forest Park, and this is on Old Dixie Highway. Now, my number one concern is safety. This is a bus stop in front of the courthouse while we are experiencing widening projects that are going on, so this bus stop is currently in a construction zone that has not been relocated. I'll espouse on that a little bit later. And this is a galvanized fencing through the, that was going in front of the gas regulator station in front of, this is picture four and five, in front of the South Rec Center, which was an extreme concern of mine. Atlanta Gaslighting Negotiation and Cooperation of Certain Entities Within the Governmental Structure, they had decided to put up black fences as an aesthetic compromise versus the galvanized fencing. But I wanted a brick encasement because of the strong hissing sound that comes from that gas transfer pipeline. I think that, Chairman, I was deeply concerned about the retention pond in front of the brand-new IT building that we're building on Tower Boulevard. And with the foresight and cooperation with the state and all these other things that we could have possibly avoided and relocated that retention pond. Now, that widening of that retention pond is going smack dab into the retention pond, and no communication was done. So, as I come to you tonight, I have discovered that the state and the utility companies can do what they want to do at will, because we do not have any county ordinances that even regulate the aesthetics that follow the completion of a particular project. So, with no ordinances in place, we are at the liberty of the utility companies, maybe cable, gas, electric, or whomever. And I think I went through the proper protocols in order to notify the powers that be that we had a significant problem here. So, what I'm asking the board to do, to really look at our ordinances, bring them up to speed, so as I was talking to Chuck Reed, that we not do best practices, but we set our own ordinances and we become the standard barrier. Now, in reference to the U-Haul companies with these satellite offices in my district, District 3, there happen to be four of them within a one-mile radius, even though we have a U-Haul rental center farther up on Tower Boulevard. So, I don't understand why all these rental U-Haul companies are being licensed.
Your time is up, sir.
So, I would like to, someone to get back with me, be an email out of courtesy, I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, some of your pictures are depicting stops within city limits, so I would encourage you to talk to the city councils as well, in Forest Park and in Lovejoy.
Yes, sir.
Mister Alvin Farmer. Mister Alvin Farmer, thank you, sir.
May I, may I speak back to your comments?
About being in the city.
Sure.
About being in the city.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, what, what you have?
Because MARTA is a governing entity. The contract is with the county and MARTA. The municipalities are subset.
Who put the trash back there? We didn't. Therefore, the city did it, therefore, the city is, is making sure that there's no litter or trash at that stop that's within their city limits. So, if you talk to them, maybe they'll put a trash can there until MARTA can, can come around with their other amenities.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mister Alvin Farmer.
Mister Farmer, proactive community activist, unincorporated Clayton County. I came to you before, I gave you a copy of this about recycling. This was from the Riverdale thing at the Redmond thing we went to. Also, I found this in the library that they asked that you recycle the Christmas trees and everything. Going on 23 years in unincorporated Clayton County, not once have I heard of a recycling day in our county. This is a paper, I showed them to all the students there, recycling from my home alone. One trip, $61.35. And by the way, I used part of that money to go to iFly, which I sent them a copy of Second thing is, I went by Sunday, that bus stop at the aquatic center has stopped, has still not been removed. So, I came up with, if you have an accident, the following people probably gonna be involved in this. The police department, the fire department, some medical emergency services, and also recce services to, to move those vehicles away. Why you, this thing has not been removed, I do not know. One of your, one of your reasons in my evaluation of stopping somebody from speaking such as myself is to not deny them from going to their facility. Ms. Torres Sada called me and says, "I am not authorizing any more senior citizens," because the mistake her people made, okay? I tried to inform them, evidently, somebody does not know the letters T-E-A-M-E-N, that means together each achieve more. I was trying to inform her that that bus that took us to the North Point Mall was going the wrong way. If you come, anywhere you're going to, going to interstate, if you come out the beach area, you take a right, it's gonna, down on our 138, it's gonna take you to Interstate 75. That gentleman that drove, and then the lady, Ms. Sally Smith, didn't know that and went straight across into a housing area. Now, I see the fact that our roads in Clayton County is, is crumbling, and y'all gonna ask for splash money to rebuild our roads, but it's not smart business to take a big truck through an area that you don't need to. You have a clock problem at, at this area also. They told me that the Lovejoy Park, you can't fix part, part of that clock, but, but then how long has that clock been out? And you still got a clock that's not working at our Griswells Center. Fire Station number six, we paid $600,000, and I fought for that because that's a place to my house, we did not get a $600,000 product, and I want whoever they is and myself to go and inspect that, because in the United States Air Force, I was on a, on an electronic installation team, which is what they did in that thing. And I want my $600, and then I want that place fixed because that's the one that's closest to my house in case I have a fire.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Deidra Poindexter.
Can you pass this to Commissioner Warner, please?
Deidra Poindexter.
Mister Chair, Mister Farmer, what is that recycling company? I want it for school, what is that recycling company?
It's on our, like, Main Street on 138. Oh, can, can you give us this, and you can look at it and get the address?
Thank you.
That place, oh, by the way, Ben, she asked a question, got 50, 60 people working for them, okay? And we can, we can make some money from that. If I'm doing 61 in my house, how much will the county do? I'd like to have that back, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Take a picture.
That's Poindexter.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Deidra Poindexter, and I'm, I have, I have lived in Jonesboro for over 22 years. I would like to address an issue that the Clayton County Library and the Board of Trustees is having an unpaid invoice of service that was conducted, conducted for daily operation of the library for the law firm LB Thomason, Snap, and Wilson. The law firm was no secret to the BOC and the team and the county attorney. I have been, I have here documentation that was given at that time of that meeting over a year ago. Also, the BOC and the team was informed of every move that was conducted by the Board of Trustees about the library and the purpose of the lawyer's service, which was in guidelines that met the state of Georgia librarians for using the grant funds. Once the service started by the law firm in February 2019 through June 2019, within that timeframe, of the grant money was available, not once was the board contacted from February to June, four months, the monthly invoices was not paid. July of 2019, I'm the chairperson for the Clayton County Library, Board of Trustees, asked the Director Lett to ask, to look into with the county finance department about the situation. We didn't get information until September of our monthly meeting. From that point, Director Lett and myself, the, made several phone calls to the state of Georgia librarian. It was clear from the state of the library, Georgia librarian, Ms. Walker and Mr. Carter, both stated from the Clayton County to pay the lawyer's invoice in amount of $6,224.50. It was communicated to the finance department of Clayton County on October 4th and October 23rd. The service that was provided was met by the website and the handbook of the Georgia Public Library, plain, plain and clear. If any of you would like to request an open record of the information, please do so, and or I can also give the information to any Clayton County citizens. Thank you very much for taking the time out to listen.
Thank you. Mister Donald Melvin.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? My name is Donald R. Melvin. I'm here to speak about the Clayton County Library at Riverdale Road. We have tried to do our best to get the job done, now that the season has changed and it began to rain a lot, you know, it costs us money. Now, aboard that, we have gotten five change orders approved, and we got a few more to put in. Told Commissioner Hambrick that we have a lot of dirt there on the site that is not, was not recognized in the bid documents. So, we gonna ask the board to have their people to look into this because we got the dirt piled up, and we want somebody to be aware of it that it's there, because it's gonna come a time that we gotta put some more change orders in to get some kind of conversation for that dirt. And the other thing, too, I would like to have a meeting with Commissioner Hambrick and Chairman Turner sometime this coming week or the following week. The only problem is, don't make it on Monday, because I have my doctor's appointment then, so, anything after that, I'm good to go. Thank you all for your time.
And sir, if you would, just call our, my assistant and her constituent aide, that coordinating meeting, if she's willing, if she's willing to meet, I can't speak for her. Mickey Garber.
Officer, will you please deliver this to Chairman Turner?
Christmas was last month, I'm sure getting a lot of guests today.
Chairman Turner, if you recognize there's no telephone numbers on there, and not all of us are computer literate, and there's no way for people who are not computer literate to receive the survey, I just want to make you aware of that situation. In making you aware of that situation, I am here to deliver my survey in person. Thank you. Mickey Garber, Clayton County, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, delivering my survey. Gender, male. Age, 66-plus. Race and ethnicity? Prefer not to answer, but if I must answer, there are only two kinds of people, good ones and bad ones, and the good ones greatly outnumber the bad ones in our county and our community. Number four, what is the total household income before taxes in the last 12 months? I prefer not to answer, but if I must, it's not applicable, because everybody lies about how much or how little they make according to their situation. Do you current, now we're getting to the meat of the matter, where the rubber meets the road. Do you currently live in Clayton County? Yes. 72 years? Do you currently work or attend school in Clayton County? Yes. What are some of Clayton County's greatest strengths and assets out of 12 possible answers? Number one, public education, K through 12. Number two, county leadership. Number three, international diverse population. Question eight, what are the Clayton County's greatest weaknesses or obstacles? Number one, public education. Number two, blighted commercials of residential areas. And I want, number three is negative perception. We created this ourselves. What are Clayton County's greatest opportunities for the future? Number one, continued improvement of public schools. Number two, continued expansion of Clayton State University. Number, number three, workforce development. Number 10, what are the biggest threats to our prosperity? Number one, school performance. Number two, blighted commercial and residential properties. Number three, failure to develop business and in the industry. Number 11, what types of business or industry should recruited to enhance quality of life and opportunity in Clayton County? Number one, airport support. Number two, transportation logistics. Number three, technology. Number 12, what is Clayton County's current, currently known for?
Time is up, sir. Your time is up.
Sir, I will relinquish the podium and give you the opportunity to read the rest of my survey. Officer, will you please deliver my survey to the chair?
Thank you, sir.
Along with this article. Thank you for your time.
Mister Rob Leatherwood.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners, Rob Leatherwood, Clayton County. On your consent agenda tonight, you're issuing a 45-day moratorium for dollar stores, which is kinda surprising, didn't we just go through a moratorium from 2016 to 2018? So, I hope we're not paying somebody to study this, because you can easily Google and get a lot of information on it, which I did. And pulled up an article from CityLab.com that said that recent research has lied on the massive growth of dollar stores. These small-box retailers carry only a limited stock of prepared foods, but they're now feeding more people than grocery chains. They're growing at a breaknaking pace, and while dollar stores sometimes fill the need in cash-strapped communities, growing evidence suggests these stores are not merely a byproduct of economic distress, but they're the cause of it. They have succeeded in the part by capitalizing on the so-called retail apocalypse, all of which have opened up gaping holes in food access. The savings they claim to offer shoppers in the communities they move to makes them in some ways a little bit poorer. They also create what's known as a food desert paradox, which is the lack of produce and healthy food options. On one hand, they are serving communities that others have neglected or abandoned, but when a neighborhood loses a supermarket, the effects on residents in the immediate area can impact their physical and mental health, and it affects the self-worth of the community as a whole. Like Walmart, these retailers present themselves as creators of jobs and sources of low-cost foods and goods in left-behind areas. And as the retail meltdown continues in many high, many high-end retailers and shopping malls and centers, as they shutter or consolidate, these stores have easily slipped in. Dollar stores are thriving in both the poorest of small towns and in larger cities, where decades of disinvestment in largely African-American communities have left vast tracts barren of retail options. In a recent blog post, dollar stores are now flourishing in many poor neighborhoods like a parasite. The problem is not the stores themselves, according to the study, they tend to create fewer jobs on average than an independent grocery store. The low-wage jobs they do create are not of great quality. When economists compare the price of goods like flour and raisins of the same weights, they notice that dollar stores products were higher cost than those at nearby Walmarts or Costcos. Then there's the negative effect on other stores nearby. The difference in margins is just enough that the local stores- that the local stores are not able to stay in business when there are so few options and they are undercutting their prices. While some governments continue to lure them into their towns with tax incentives, others are doing the opposite. There's a movement known as Not in My Backyard that is gaining traction. It's about retaining the soul of the community. It's about what kind of town and community do we want to have? Communities are standing up and raising red flags, saying it may be good in the short term, but perhaps not in the long term. Please consider your decision over the next forty-five days as you, uh, investigate the impact of dollar stores in Clayton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherwood, but I do want to point out one fact. We're looking at small box stores. We didn't specifically say dollar store or any other store.
No, that's fine. I'm just reading to you what they say. Typically, small box stores are known as dollar stores.
But I want to make sure that you understood from our resolution that we're talking about small box stores.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, I did ask for that. Um, I did. And yes, we did have a moratorium before. And yes, we were told when that process went through that these categories were added in. I did also ask for other categories. So I'm hoping that we can get to some place of resolve, um, as other counties have, um, shown some success in doing the same.
And that's why we're, we're gonna look at those other counties and cities and see how they are handling that issue, that very issue that you read out. So thank you for, for bringing it. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next, we will have our consent agenda.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
The next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash one. Resolution provided for the designation of the Vice Chairman for the Board of Commissioners.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, um, and Board of Commissioners. I have one resolution, which is Resolution twenty twenty dash one. A resolution providing for the designation of the Vice Chair, Chairman for the Board of Commissioners, provide for the term of office of the Vice Chairman to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Okay, is there any recommendations, nominations? I would like to nominate Commissioner Demont Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Second board appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Board. This appointment is to replacement is Johnny Watkins, who was appointed in August twenty nineteen, and because of the conflict with her employment, she is not able to serve. Appointment will start immediately and will expire on August twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Any recommendations? Any recommendations?
When do they meet?
Excuse me?
When do they meet? What is the meeting time for this board?
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you answer that? Not right offhand?
Not offhand, right offhand.
Okay, we'll hold. I'll ask that be held until next meeting. Mr. Reed, is there a request for executive session?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, on litigation and actual, now real estate.
Litigation, okay. I got a request to go on to executive session for litigation of real estate. I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Alright. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you for being here. Alright, motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Would you like me to take them both together?
Yes.
Okay, first is a property damage claim relating to an accident that occurred on September tenth, twenty nineteen. Um, the payee is Allstate Insurance, and the claimant is Kimberly Brentum, B-R-E-N-T-U-M, for damage to her twenty seventeen Lexus in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, the next is, oh, and this event took place at McDonough Road and Terra Road. The second is, uh, incident that occurred on September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen at Highway one thirty-nine and Riverdale Road. And the payee is Deborah Ocampo, uh, and it's damage to her two thousand sixteen Volvo truck in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And requesting that, um, you would approve these amounts and authorize Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as necessary.
Alright, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any questions?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Warner.
Um, one of them is one district, one is the other. Uh, as we're paying these things, are, are we looking to see what we can do to minimize having to deal with losses such as this? Are we documenting it on the operations side to address the concerns, whatever they are?
Are you talking about like, um, I guess defensive driving and those kind of things?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have that in place, and we have some, uh, more training that, that Chief and I just recently spoke about that not only for the public safety officials, but countywide employees that utilize county vehicles. So there is some more training that's forthcoming. Commissioner Hammer.
Okay, my question was, uh, the garage. Is that included? Oh, we don't have to?
We, we don't have to.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Everybody have a good night.